San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, January 30th of 2024. The time is 3:00 PM. Ms. Cordova, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, Mayor Hewson.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, and it is now time for our citizen comment time period. The City Council welcomes speakers at work sessions. Those wishing to speak during the citizen comment or question and answer must have signed up ahead of time. You may speak once during the citizen comment time period, and you may not yield time to others. You have three minutes to speak. That will begin when you state your name. You will see the green bar appear. And when you get to the yellow, you only have 20 seconds left. And when it goes red, your time is up. And we may have an automatic bell that dings to remind you also. Our first speaker today is... I'm probably gonna mispronounce this. Tom Eversdyke?
Uh, Tom Eversdyke.
Okay. Okay. If you'll go to the podium, you can pull that microphone down to suit you. And you will have three minutes after you state your name, and the timer is up here.
Okay. I'm Thomas Eversdyke, resident of San Marcos. And I have a short-term rental. And I just began my registration again. Renewed it for the third year. And was one of the first people that had the fire marshals come in and people from code enforcement to check on the house and did everything. But I'm here because I think that there are some things in the new ordinance changes that I'd like to see different. I would like to see... I think we should be able to... If I have a good record with the city and everything, I should be able to have more than maybe one short-term rental. But right now, you have it that you could only have one. So... And I really think that short-term rentals are really a needed thing here in San Marcos because we don't have that many hotel rooms, and we have a lot of people coming in. Most of my guests, some of them come from out of state, but most of them are families. You know, I can house 10 people in my Airbnb. It's a house. And they really appreciate having a place where they can have the whole family come, whether it be for tubing or whether it be for something else. And I see that there's a lot of new things in the ordinance. And it really seems like you're discouraging, trying to discourage people to have short-term rentals. Where there isn't really a big problem. I haven't heard any major incidents with short-term rentals here. We vet our people. We don't take everybody, that's for sure. Because we don't want our house trashed. We don't want all that kind of stuff. And as a matter of fact, our short-term rentals, I'd rather have it than a lease, long-term lease, because you have to keep these places really nice. Because otherwise, you don't get good reviews, and then you don't get customers. You don't have people coming back. But those are just some of the comments I wanted to make. And as a matter of fact, we are celebrating at our house our 100th review, and they've been all five stars. And only had one incident with the code enforcement. And that was somebody called in because one of the cars was parked a little on the sidewalk. You know? But I was talking to Stormy, who works for them, says, "Well, we get those comments from a lot of people." Not just short-term rental. People are always complaining about, you know, parking on the sidewalk. But that's really all I have to say. Most of the things I agree with, because I've been registered and paying my hotel tax, but...
And your time is up.
And I would like to see you just eliminate that hotel tax, which would be nice, so we can lower our prices.
Okay. Ms. Cordova, he was the only person signed up. Is that correct?
Uh-huh. That's the only person that we have signed up.
All right. In that case, we'll move on to item one of one. If you will tell us what it is, please, ma'am.
Receive a staff update, hold a discussion, and consider possible action regarding proposed amendments to the city's short-term rental ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, you will receive a briefing on an update to the short-term rental ordinance from Director of Neighborhood Enhancement, Greg Carr. City Council provided direction back in November 2021 to work on suggested amendments. At the time of the direction, there were several court cases going through the legal system that would impact our ordinance, so we delayed bringing back proposed changes. Over the last two years, staff has conducted six public outreach meetings regarding this topic. The suggested updates to the ordinance are based on that input that we received from residents as well as research of other best practices within other cities. Staff is recommending the proposed updates to the ordinance to help address the concerns we heard from council about the impact short-term rentals may have on a neighborhood. I will now turn it over to Mr. Carr to walk us through the suggested changes and receive your feedback.
Can we go to the next slide? Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Greg Carr, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement. And we're back again for short-term rentals. Hopefully, we're getting to an end point here where we can actually implement some changes that will help us as we go through. All I really wanted to do today is talk about some of the changes that make the biggest impact for us going forward. We did... And so that's why in the packet, I didn't do the normal red line, because the way we moved things around and read and scratched out, it would have been impossible to read. So hopefully, how I did it, you got to see what was new and what was left in. So we reordered a little bit. The one item that we had to do was take out the owner occupied requirements based on an executive session we had here, I think, in all summer. So that was done. We're requiring more information on the application. We took over short-term rental registration. When'd you get yours? Your NAFCO two years ago? He was our first. After we took over. But we're asking for some more information. Sketch of available parking, floor plan, a contact information for a 24-hour contact if the owner doesn't live local, list of the hosting sites. And then confirmation will confirm with finance to make sure they're signed up for their hot tax before we'll approve a permit.
And that would be hotel occupancy tax?
Hotel occupancy tax, yes, ma'am. So another thing we're gonna do is require that all short-term rentals have a permit. The current ordinance, it's only those that are in residential areas. And the way our zoning goes, we literally could have two houses side by side on the street. One's required, one's not. So this gets everybody to have a permit. We make sure they're doing their hot taxes. And we also then can get in to do some basic safety stuff. We don't get real intrusive. So to do that, we've created two types. So we have the residentially zoned, and then we have a non-residential. And that's a little confusing, too, because we have homes where I live, Longo Vista, residential neighborhood, but it's not zoned residential. So I wouldn't fall under it, under the current ordinance. So this just puts it across the board. So we added one per block. This is to keep them from getting too close together. And we will add linear to that, because it's... So we did one block or 600 feet. And the reason we did the 600 feet, because if you have a really long block and you have one on each end, they're not gonna impact each other. The average city block is like 1,200 feet, so took half of that. We've, like I mentioned earlier, we're doing some inspections for basic safety items, making sure they have their smoke detectors, that their water heater's not clogged up. They have stuff setting up against it. Make sure the fire department can get to the electrical panel. Just simple things like that, that they have fire extinguishers and that. And with the two types of the permits, the type one and type two, the type one, we're also gonna add a notification requirement for 400 feet, where we'll send out a card to everybody within 400 feet. We'll add that, you know, at this address, there's a short-term rental. We do have a provider that helps us identify short-term rentals. And we're in the process of setting up where they will help us do the renewals so that we don't have to do that. They'll send out notifications. And more importantly, they'll have a 24/7 phone line and website. So if something's going on on a Saturday night, a neighbor has somebody to call, and it shouldn't be the police. It should be the responsible party. So the company will call that 24-hour contact, say you have loud noise, you have whatever's going on at your property. And then it's their responsibility to go and take care of it. It's not just a one-and-done. If they can't get hold of the person, there's an escalation where it goes up to the police department and stuff. And then they will also notify any calls that we get or that they get to us that we can follow up to see what was going on. Another nice thing about it is they don't just call the owner or the 24-hour contact. They'll call them back afterwards to go, "Were you able to remedy the solution or the problem?" And if they get a yes, and then there's no further complaints from the neighbors, everything's good. So that's one of the items that we've weaved into this whole ordinance is behavior-based. If there is no problem at the resident, whether it's a normal resident or a short-term resident or rental, why do we need to bother with it? It's those that might have a problem that we're trying to put in some items so that we can follow up. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. So this is a third-party service. Is this the same one that's finding the short-term rentals for us?
Yes.
Okay. Whenever we do the notifications for zoning, et cetera, we're using the Hays Central Appraisal District data?
Yeah. We'll send out the notifications, just the way Planning does. So we'll send out the postcards.
There's something you said that made it sound like the third-party people were gonna be sending that out. And I'm going, "How would they possibly know?"
Right.
So when do we send out that notice to the neighbors?
So it'll go out on the first, when somebody new applies, so that everybody knows. If we're having issues with a property, and they've maybe come into compliance, but then a little bit later, they're going on, we may do another one later on to remind the neighbors of how they can contact somebody. But just, it... The return on the dollar for us to do it every time they renewed, I'm not sure that that would be a good...
So it's on a new application?
New application.
Okay. And that's when the neighbors get the information about the phone number to call if there's issues?
Yes. So they'll get the website and also get the 24/7 number. So if you have a problem, call these people 24/7, and they'll hopefully be able to rectify it.
Okay. Because what I wasn't seeing in here, as you saw from my notes, is how do the neighbors know how to call that contact person? I didn't know that we had somebody, an intermediary, which I think is a good idea. Because if I were the contact person, I wouldn't want my phone number out on the website. Because we were... Do we have on our website a list of the, I'm gonna call it, valid short-term rentals?
I know when Planning was doing it, that they had a list with all the people's personal information, and they had some heartburn with that. I think we do, but I'm not gonna commit to that.
Will we after?
We will after this.
Okay.
Yes.
So it'll be out there. So if I live across and down, and maybe I'm not within the 400, but I hear the noise, then I can go to the city's website, look up short-term rental problems or something like that, and I will get that information and the company and the phone number?
Correct. It'll have that. But then, more than likely, you're gonna be calling us to talk to us, so we can...
Not if it's midnight on Saturday night?
Not enough if it's on midnight. But if it's just, you don't like, because they're parking wrong or something, and you just wanna let us know, yeah. We get those calls all the time.
Turn on your microphone before you talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's paying for the cost for this service?
It's tied into... Basically, it's cost-neutral for what we're charging for the permit. Bases it out.
Balance out?
And the nice thing about this new service is there's no technology fee on it, so it's just the permit fee. But they do the, like, notices to send out, "Hey, it's time to renew your permit." Or, "Now, we're doing that." And then, once we get the short-term rentals set up, then we're gonna look at doing the long-term rentals in there, like they're supposed to. Because that's the problem with the long-term rentals. Right now, we're manually having to go and scour names and stuff out of a spreadsheet, which is just not the best way to use your time.
So what's the service called?
It's Host Compliance. It's through Granicus, which is the same service we use for the packets.
And they will send out the renewal notice?
They'll send out the renewal notice. They'll send out if...
Who's the enforcement on that if people don't respond?
It'll be code compliance.
And so it'll end up coming back to you that, "Hey, we sent this out 21 days ago. Haven't heard anything," or whatever.
Right. And they'll also, as they're finding what they think might be new ones, they'll send out a letter, "Hey, it's come to our attention. You may be a short-term rental. Here's the process to sign up." And then if they don't hear anything back, then they'll get with us, and we can follow up and see if it was just a one-time thing or somebody trying to fly under the wire.
Okay.
So like you said earlier, we're also gonna add a bunch of behavior-based items, because these are things we can control. And it's the same for the short-term rental or the person that owns the home. They need to behave themselves. So some of the behavior-based issues are, and these are the most common, is parking, noise, and litter. We're gonna add information that the owner must provide for the tenant, so like a little handout or a book that they have. A lot of the Airbnbs have that already that provides information. But sometimes, what we're requiring is the number of occupants that they're gonna require, you know, whether they want two there or want 10 there.
The maximum.
The maximum that they want. The location where they're supposed to park or not park, if that's the situation. They've worked out a deal with a neighbor, "Don't park in front of my house." They need to let tenants that are coming in know that. The quiet hours for the city. And one thing that we've added, and this happened because somebody called in, was restrictions on outdoor facilities. And this, we're just providing, they can write it how they want. But what we had one day is a neighbor calling in. The people that were using the house were out using the fire pit in the back, while the winds were blowing about 50 miles an hour. And they were legitimately concerned. And this was during the day. You know, fire pits, pools, just things to let the people stay in there know, you know, "I don't want you in the pool after whatever your requirements are." The cleanliness requirements. This would be, this is where you put the garbage when you're done, if you're the ones that's putting it up. If they have to take the garbage cans out, what day of the week it goes out, and that they need to pull it back in if they're there for more than a couple days over that period. It also adds clarifying suspension and revocation procedures. So that was part of the problem we had with the old one, is if we had somebody that was on our radar, how do we, other than give them a citation, which is a higher level to get to that point? And the ultimate is the pocketbook. So if we can suspend them for 30 days, and we have different timeframe, 36 months, and then a year, or we can revoke, too. So we want them to have good businesses in our town. So if they're doing something, or they had an incident at their house, and they can come back with, say it was a noise instance that happened a couple times, and they really are sincere about solving the problem, they can put in noise meters so that they get notified, you know? We also, I think you have cameras on the front and back so that you can see... You know, they say there's gonna be five people, and now there's 35 people there. That's an issue. Now I can go out and take care of it. So there are things that the owners can do to help solve problems. We're updating some of the definitions just to meet, because of the, some of the changes we've added. We're updating the enforcement section. Again, that's parking, requiring the notification and the material for the tenants, the items I've talked about, and the behavior. Adding a section where you can't have recreational vehicles or trailers, which are popular in some areas. We don't want that here. And then also the 24-hour contact.
And what you mean is the RV being used as the short-term rental?
Correct. Whether they live there or not. I wanna go to the one that has the covered Conestoga wagons at some point in my life. But...
You mentioned earlier that there's...
Uh, microphone.
You mentioned earlier that there's a limit in adults, six or whatever. But let's say that they have a party, and there's 40 people out there, and it's happened here in San Marcos. Do y'all do something right then and there? Or do the neighbors have to put up with that kind of activity all night long?
Well, hopefully, they don't put up with it all night long. So that is another, it's the next item, is we remove the no-party restrictions. And that doesn't mean we want them to have a gala there and get all out of hand. But there's a court case that said you can't restrict the freedom of, you know, getting with people. So again, it's behavior. If you have 20 people, and it's a graduation party, and everybody's just being normal like they would be at your house or my house, not a problem. Sometimes at your house and our house, they start getting a little crazy. We can deal with it. But that's what that 24-hour number is, for them to call and go, "Hey, they were good until about 10 o'clock, and now I think the responsible people left, and the kids are still there." And then they can take care of it at midnight or whenever it might be.
I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't paying attention. Did you say they do respond if it continues all night? Does the San Marcos Police Department?
Yes. So...
Well, let's back up. Let's go through the whole service and who they call and what happens. Let's go through that.
So, yeah. So they'll call the responsible party or the 24-hour contact. If they don't get an answer, they'll give, you know, five minutes, 10 minutes. Maybe they're in the shower. They'll call them back. If they don't get a response, then it goes up to the next branch in the tree of who they call.
But shouldn't there be two? Shouldn't there be, now that we're not requiring the owner to be there, shouldn't it be owner and then the 24-hour contact? Because that's what we had before, was if the owner wasn't there at that moment, there had to be that 24-hour contact. So shouldn't there be two people that the service can call?
They'll have the owners. The owner's different than the 24-hour person. They'll have that information, and they can follow up and call that. That 24-hour is...
So you're saying that could be the owner?
It could be the owner. And most likely, it will be the owner.
In today's world, because we don't require the owner to be on premises?
Right. And we just called it a 24-hour emergency contact, which more than likely will be the owner. Except if there's somebody that's out of town, or... Most of ours are local. At some point, they're up in Kyle or someplace. So they could still get here within, and we have an hour requirement that they have to be able to respond within an hour. So it's not...
That's what we required before, is it had to be somebody within a, I forget, whatever mile. You know, not somebody from Houston to be your contact, but it had to be somebody who could get here within, I think it was 30 minutes. So go ahead, and I'll get to you. Go ahead and go through the process. I interrupted you. So Mr. Gonzalez hears noise coming from my house. I've got a short-term rental. So he calls this company called Host Compliance. Okay.
And they get hold of the owner, 24-hour contact. And then, if they get hold of them, they'll call back to go, "Were you able to resolve the conflict?" And might say, "Well, how do we know that?" Well...
So they'll call the person?
They'll call you back if you're the short-term rental owner. They'll call you back if you're the 24-hour contact to make sure, "Were you able to solve the problem?" You say, "Yep." And we're suspicious by nature, so that's why we get to report. Because if you say you solved it, and we find out the police went out, then you didn't solve it.
That's why I was thinking, do you call the complainant back?
We can add that if you'd like that.
And say, "Was it resol..." I think that's the person that ought to be calling back, is Mr. Gonzalez to say, "Was it taken care of?" Not me, because I'm probably gonna tell you, "Yeah, everything's fine."
No, that's a good point.
Well, and different people have different tolerances for noise.
Yes. And it may be that that initial complaint was taken care of, but now they went inside and turned the music up. So it's, they were outside, and I could hear them, and now it's a different thing. So, okay, we'll let them know they need to go back. We're building that tree out right now, so that's very easy to put in. Of course, they'd ask, "Do you want us to call you back?" Because if it's midnight, you may not want them to call you back.
That's true. It could be their choice.
Yeah. No, that's a very good, good point. And another item that I think is important is we've moved the appeal process...
Oh, hold on. I just wanted to close the loop on that complaint stuff, but I'm still unsure about some things. So if you can't get a hold of the contact...
Then they'll call the police department. But, you know, right now, that's kind of where it starts. And we all know our police have a lot more things to do.
I was gonna say, if it's 1:00 AM on Saturday night, Sunday morning, I think that they're gonna have other things that they're probably dealing with. And we'll just know that that's, you know, responses may be delayed.
Yeah. And so that's why getting the owner or contact person to solve the problem, one, it reduces our resources. They need to know about it. We've had one instance here where there was a party, and police showed up, and they were cited for it. So that's another, when we go back to what we're requiring them to notify, put in for the person renting the home, we specifically called out sections of our code, like the noise ordinance and the parking and stuff. So to say that you can, if you violate these, you as renting the property can get the ticket for it. It's not, you have all the income free to do what you want.
Thank you very much. And this kind of goes back to the incidents we've had with parties before with some of these short-term rentals. Are these buildings, are these short-term rentals, are they required to have anywhere listed the occupancy capacity?
Yeah, that's what he was saying in the information.
So it will be listed down there? So if a neighbor knows it's only 50 people are allowed in that building, and they see 200, they can immediately call up and say, "Hey, this is..."
Well, it's gonna be more like 10, max.
Okay.
Now, we don't wanna give people the false hope, you know, that, "I know it's 10, but they have 25 over there. If they're all there..." I stopped the other day on my way home, because they were parked across the sidewalk. That was the only thing, knocked on the door. And they were having a graduation party. It was inside. They had, I don't know how many people, but they were like a party at our house. It was just under control. All I did is say, you know, "Move your cars up over the sidewalk." And I did ask them. I go, "Are you renting?" "Yes." "What are you here for?" And all we're here for, it was graduation time at Texas State.
Is there any way to connect the two, since some of these short-term rentals are used? And I'm gonna go back to an incident that happened a couple of months ago in Riviera. It was rented, and it was used as, I guess, an after-party for something like a wedding or something like that. If we require places like Wattemo to have an occupancy sitting out there, and it's just for a get-together, a wedding, or whatever it is, can we not apply the same rules to these short-term rentals? So if we know that 200 is a max capacity for that, you know, half an acre worth of land...
So there's a difference in what we talk about occupancy, which is what, two per bedroom plus two, and it doesn't include the little kids? But if there, and when we didn't allow parties, that was occupancy. So the occupancy that we're talking about, that's in the brochure, the information, is the number of people who can sleep there. But with the parties, then what is the number? Or do we want to name a number of how many additional people can be on premises? Do we need to come up with, like a fire code number?
Well, my hair on my neck crawls a little bit. If you tell somebody they can have, because currently, right now, you can have, at your home, you can have up to 100 people at an event. I don't wanna tell people, "Well, you can have up to 100 people."
Good point.
Because that gives them the, "Oh, well, I can..." You know, I'd rather have them think, "Here's the occupancy 10," or whatever. "We're fudging it a little bit, having 15 or 20 over for this party, but I'm gonna keep them all quiet." That's where I come from.
Well, I'm just thinking square footage of the house, number of parking spaces, if we can turn out some kind of acceptable number. I mean, if there isn't one, then who's to say it's too many? And if I were the owner, I'd say, "You didn't give me a number. Why can't I have 120 people here?"
Well, before we bring it back, we'll work on seeing if we can do something for that.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Mendoza?
No, ma'am. Thank you very much.
All right.
So like I started to say, that one of the things that I think is important Um, so as, like I started to say, that one of the things that I think is important is we've moved the appeal process from the municipal court to the neighborhood commission. And I've talked to the neighborhood commission about this a couple of times. And one, I've heard this issue at the neighborhood com- commission more than once. So they're our neighborhood. They, you know, know what's going on in the neighborhoods. And I think they could have a fair evaluation of neighbors' rights versus that property's rights. Where sometimes the courts, it's just, they don't take the outside in as much as they do, just what's the letter of the law.
But at some point, if somebody's going, they're at the neighborhood commission for the third time?
They wouldn't be to the, so it would be, they'd only go to the neighborhood commission if I've suspended them.
Right.
And they wanna appeal that.
Right.
Um, they could come in and say, you know, I don't think this is, you know, he doesn't like me or whatever. And I don't think I'm gonna lose at the neighborhood commission. Cause they know the issues. And I'm not gonna go, it's gonna be good cause before I ever suspend somebody or revoke them. And then when I talk to them, I have no problem if, let's say I suspend somebody because they've had some party issues. And they come back and present, you know what, we'd like another chance. We've done these things like I talked about. We've put in noise meters. We get called. I've put in cameras so I can tell if there's fifty people in my backyard, you know. I have no problem with the neighborhood commission go, yeah, let's give them another chance. Cause all that'll happen is if they mess up again, they're right back and they're not gonna get that second chance.
Now, after the neighborhood commission, is there another step they can re-uppile this, their decision?
That in the ordinance is the last. Um, I'd have to ask legal if they could go to, uh, court on that to get it overturned, but that's the last step for our ordinance.
And we don't know how that's gonna work yet.
If, if we don't set up another internal pill process, uh, a court would be the only remedy after that. Unless we set up another layer of appeals, such to some other body or the council. So otherwise court.
Okay. And what happens if someone has not registered? They, they, their friends are doing short-term rentals. They decide they're going to, they don't know they need to apply. And so they start doing this and have the big blowout party, as has happened in multiple places in, in town. Some were registered. The first one that we know about that started our whole conversation certainly wasn't. It was advertised as a party house and that's what was happening.
And that's the good thing about our, um, the host compliance is cause they're actively out looking for these. And they base that on, um, the advertisements at the multiple different sites. And so they pick up on that and then they do all the front-end legwork of trying to identify it. Cause at first, you know, you don't get the address when you rent something at Airbnb. Um, so they get the, the ad, they look at the pictures. Um, they pare it down to where they think it is and they'll actually look at front, you know, they, cause they usually always show a picture of the front of the house, so you know. So they'll look at, and, you know, or the floor plans. They've done that where, um, this matches and then they send it to us. It's, we're, we're still the final where we have to go out and go.
Well, someone won't be in the city that they're gonna find. It'll say San Marcos, they'll find an address and it's not gonna be in the city, so.
And we do have that issue in the ETJ where there's some in the ETJ, but those aren't under our purview.
Um, but back to the, well, how often does a host compliance give you a list? Once a month? Once every six months?
It's online that, so we can monitor where, and they classify it as, we, this is a known one, registered one, this is one.
So they're constantly looking?
They're constantly updating.
Okay. So, but what if someone has done it? They didn't know, or they just, this is the first time they've ever done a short-term rental and it's kind of blown up into, you know, big noisy party. So what happens then? I guess we start out with what would happen if I were having a big noisy party. But, but secondly, when somebody says, hey, we're renting this place, then what happens if someone has started short-term renting and they have not registered?
That's when the education comes in where we give them, this is what you've gotta do. Here's the process. This is how you do it. This is what we're gonna do. We're gonna come out and look at your property and stuff and, uh, and get them registered.
Okay.
We may give them some stern talking to about why it got out of hand that one time, but again, having the contact person and, and where the neighbors could call and not have to wait, cause that's usually what the neighbors do before they call the police. So wait and wait and wait.
Yeah. Okay.
So then, next slide, please. There you go. Um, as Mr. Reyes talked about, we've held some public hearings or meetings. We did with just neighbors and then we did with, uh, those, um, people on the short-term rentals and, were you at that one? And we had a lot of people there. We talked to Kona. Uh, it's been at the neighborhood commission several times. So there's not gonna be a whole lot that's gonna change, just some of the rules. Um, but we'll get it out on our normal communication channels. Um, we will have, um, a little beefier webpage that talks about it on, you know, for both a neighbor that maybe has a concern and those that are interested. Um, one issue we did find when we first took over is people weren't paying their hotel occupancy taxes. And at first I got a little torqued, but then I had a friend that has a short-term rental that's in the business area saying, no, there's confusion because Airbnb will take state taxes out. And so a lot of property owners were thinking their taxes were being paid, not realizing there was a local hotel occupancy tax. And so when we contacted them, it was just a matter of getting signed up and getting taken care of. So that's why we've changed the process before we even, we'll sign off on the permit. We'll check to make sure that they've gone to finance and they've gotten everything set up where they can. Now, if they don't pay them, that's another, uh, option, but with our, with host compliance, they do have a tool. They can't give us a hundred percent accuracy, but based on some of their analytics that they can draw, they should say, they should have, this should have been their rental income for this period. Um, and then we can match that up and go, no, it doesn't match, or yes, it, it's closed. And that's kind of our backup on how we can make sure they're doing. We haven't had that issue other than the initial, they weren't paying it at all. And like I said, I got a little frustrated with that, but then once I learned, well, you can't hold them accountable if they didn't know, cause they weren't being told during the permit process, you've gotta go do this. So y'all got the email. Um, I'm just calling you Tom, okay? Cause I can't say your last name. Um, and we've worked it out. He had some concerns about the requirement for reporting. And that's just, we don't want their information. We don't need their information. That's just more work for us. But getting back to the hot taxes, if we find there's a disparity, instead of having finance have to, we can ask for, what's your rental records for this period so that we can work it out? So that's the, we're not gonna ask for that with monthly or yearly, cause I don't have the staff to handle that. So going on to the next slide, Hayden? There you go. Thank you. The next steps, we're gonna continue implementing the new software. Uh, it's a very big ease of use for the, us and, uh, short-term rental owners. Uh, like you said, the company sends renewals. They have the twenty-four seven hotline. Um, they'll also send out notices of theirs, like I said, if they think somebody's doing it, they'll send out that pre-letter to say, hey, here's the requirements. Um, so that really eases the staff concern, which gets back to that cost. They're absorbing that cost instead of us having to do it. This is, I believe, fits one of our strategic plan objectives, which is neighborhood preservation and enhancement. And next slide. So what we need, uh, from you guys is if you're comfortable with what we've got so far, um, with some of the changes or possible changes that we've talked about during this meeting, um, that's what we need.
I've got, I've got one more question. It's on the thirty-four eight sixteen suspension of permit. And I think it's just a wording thing, but it says.
Yeah, it wasn't in the old one. It's not in the new one, but it was.
No, it's just one word.
Oh, yes, new.
Upon suspension of a permit, the owner may not continue to allow new tenants. And I'm, I'm asking, can we just get rid of the word new?
No, and the reason that is in there, it's, I don't think it's fair for, I've been planning this trip to San Marcos for three months. I had this, um, reservation planned. And maybe I'm there or maybe I'm getting ready, I'm gonna be there in two days.
I was gonna ask about that too. If you suspend somebody, you're pulling the rug out from under somebody's vacation.
Right. So that's why it's, it's not a true stop today. It's kind of, and we've done this before. It's, we talked to them, what do you got coming up? And they go, got somebody this weekend and I got somebody Wednesday and Thursday. Okay, after Thursday, no more.
Then, then I would suggest instead of new, because we don't define new, that's what it meant to you. That's not what it meant to me when I read it. I'm going, well, we can't have the new, but returning people are okay.
Yeah.
So I think it would maybe already scheduled, somebody scheduled within the next thirty days. We, we need what you're thinking when you say new, because that was a question that I have is, is again, pulling the rug out from under somebody's vacation through no fault of the tenants.
Right. And unfortunate event, I get hit by a bus. The next guy, that may not describe news.
So if we can just figure, figure out what we want to do there.
Mayor Houston.
Yes.
Might suggest that we, we, um, we could terminate new reservations effective the date of the suspension. So any prior reservation dates could stand.
That works, but I don't know if the word new is what we're looking for. It'd just be anything past that date, doesn't matter. Because it says new tenants. It doesn't say a new booking. It says new tenants.
That's what I'm getting at, is the new, the new bookings is what we're really targeting.
That's where we wanna go with it. And I'm fine with however we, we figure that out. It's just the way this was worded. Sounds like we can't have anybody new, but the people that were there a month ago, they can come back and I, I don't think that's what we meant.
Do you work in our world? Cause that's how we think. We think how you can get around it.
Exactly.
But yeah, we don't wanna hurt those people that are innocent parties, you know, so that they can come in, they can still have their thing and not have to scramble at the last minute. But we just don't want, cause we know it's gonna be an ongoing thing. We're not gonna get to that point if they've been cooperative. So we don't want them to just keep booking and keep booking and, and playing the, the game. So what, usually we will give them a date so that they don't, oh, this was already booked, you know, and they've slid another one in there.
So I, I'm fine with that. It's just, I don't think this was saying, I agree with what you wanna do, but I don't think this was saying that.
No, it's a good catch.
So, um, the only concern that I still have is that, and I hate to say the party occupancy limit, I'm gonna say like the fire code limit. Because we got, we've, we've defined how many can sleep there. And, and we're gonna let them have events. You can have, you know, your people come over from, you know, six to whatever, have barbecue, celebrate the graduation. At some point, we hope everybody goes home. But how we come up with that number, and I appreciate your apprehension of if we said it was a hundred, they're gonna start, they're gonna invite ninety-nine. But if you've got a three-bedroom house on a regular lot, there is a, a limit. Now, if you've got someplace out in the country and you've got plenty of space and lots of parking, that, that's a whole different, different critter. So.
Yeah, and you, but I'll probably begin with, uh, Jonathan Henderson on that, because that is the, the best way to, it's kind of like occupancy with the business, what's.
Think of it like the fire code.
Yes.
Limit and that would be what it would be. And I, I don't think for your usual houses, it'll be a hundred, but. That, that was my only concern left. I need to let the others speak and I need to see if Mr. Gleason, who's online, if he's got his hand up or if he's got anything he wants to ask. Mr. Gleason?
No, I, I appreciate the conversation and I, a couple of good points there, Mayor, and I agree with the few suggestions that you did have there. Um, and appreciate staff's time on working on this. You know, this is a hot topic and, uh, there's a lot of ramifications all the way around. So thanks to staff for working on this. I think there's, I think this looks pretty good. And, uh, I agreed with both of the suggestions the mayor had there on some verbiage changes and I'll be supporting this.
You got some nice bird noise in the background.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Mendoza, anything else?
I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
You're good.
No, I, I agree with the mayor, um, especially with the, the follow-up, the fire code. I just like to see what happens with that. But I also understand, um, these individuals, their likelihood depends on good ratings. So I want to ensure that we still have that ability to allow them to continue with their good ratings, cause some of these people live off this. So thank you for considering these things as well and thank you for the time that you guys have taken for this.
So one point that I did not bring up, so we do have a couple, this is back to that restriction to the number on the street. We do have a couple and we talk about those specific ones or grandfathers. I think it's the very last section in there. We haven't really had problems with it, but they will lose that if they do not re-register. So it's up to them. Um, so that can go away. So that, hopefully we, cause we had some on the neighborhood commission that we don't like it, but they're already there. They've been operating for years. I don't think we could take that away. But sometimes people are slow to renew and, um, they better not be.
Yeah. This, I, I think that, um, the improvements, the additions are great. Thank y'all. Um, I think you've made a lot of things more clear and you're addressing the things that we can't govern anymore. So, uh, thank you. It sounds like this host compliance is gonna be just really good for y'all to take a lot of the, the workload, um, off.
The good thing is we already had them to identify and then they had these extra modules that we just could add on to take. Cause for us to do it, it would have been kind of tough, but with, just with them being able to reach out and do the follow-up notifications.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And, you know, it's time to renew. It's staff time that they don't have to.
I assume email addresses are key to all of that.
Emails and letters. And if we have any notices that we wanna implement, like, um, you have this violation, you know, you're, might get suspended or whatever, you know, it's kind of like a warning notice. They actually will send that, they'll have it and we just click a button and then they'll send that out. So it saves us forty-five cents, whatever postage is now.
That sounds good. What is the application fee and what is the renewal fee nowadays?
You've got me stumped on that one.
I'm sorry. Well, it is what it is. Uh, I just wanna make sure that the application fees continue to cover the host compliance requirements so that we're not spending the money. But we've had, the first time, we've got a little bit of time, so I'll tell this, cause I was here when we created this ordinance. And, uh, it came about because, uh, happened to be a friend of mine, lives on Riviera, not on the river side, but the other side. And multiple times at about two-thirty in the morning, the bus shows up and thirty people who are quite inebriated come stumbling off of that, making a lot of noise, as inebriated people sometimes do, going into the house that it turns out was being advertised as a party house. And that was my first experience with, with this. And so that wasn't good. We've had another one in the historic district that was, uh, next to a disaster. So, uh, I'm glad to see that, that we've put some more things in place. We can't control people's behavior, but we can at least try to get the host to take responsibility as much as we can. And, um, and I, I think we're heading down the right direction.
Uh, Mayor, you sparked my mind and one other question. Uh, the parking situation, we had a deal on Durango Street that all Durango was, was actually taken on the street. Uh, and then where actually where the party was, it was vehicles down that street as well. How, how are we gonna work that? How are we gonna work that? What are we gonna do for that?
I would be a millionaire if I could come up with a parking solution for cities. Um, that example I gave you earlier where I stopped and they were parked across the sidewalk. I know the guy across the street. He was out in his yard. So, um, and they had had a party earlier and it got rectified. Um, and so I just, since I was gonna stop and talk to him anyway, I was talking to him, I'm like, so have we had any more incidents? And he goes, no. And he goes, there'll be, you know, there's four cars parked there, two in the driveway and one on each side. He goes, you'll see that, you know, they're parked like that. But he points to the neighbor's house, he goes, they have eight cars and they live there. So that wasn't as bad of a problem as that. So when I say if we could solve the parking thing, that's just a common thing that comes up. So when I say if we could solve the parking thing, that's just a common thing that comes up in a public street. But through this, we'll designate, and they can't estimate if there's going to be somebody over for a graduation party, they're going to park where they need to park. But if we just have the, the residents there that are there for the night or two nights, this is where we want you to park. Park in the driveway versus parking on the street unless you have to. Like I said, do not park in front of Mrs. Whoever's house, even though it's legal to do that, they're being good, good neighbors. And this was kind of taken, everybody knows Shanna, she goes to visit her son up at tech and stays in an Airbnb, and in their thing, it tells them where they can park and where they can't park, so.
But if they do park there, there's nothing really we can do.
As long as it's legal.
Yeah. I mean, we can ask, it doesn't hurt.
No, and it's, when I say nothing, maybe nothing, but we can't talk to them and go, what's going on? You know, it's, you're having multiple cars there, and that might be the conversation is, I thought you only allowed five people or eight people here. You know, unless everybody's driving their own car, there's no way there should be that many cars there. And like you said, educate them into being better.
Well, thank you very much.
I would suggest providing people a Microsoft Word template for that informational.
Yes, and we, that's the plan, is to have one written out where they can insert. And so we'll have our pieces that will be in red or whatever, this has to stay.
Right.
Here's a recommended, like, an example would be if you have a pool or fire pit, put some rules over that with a suggestion, if you have a fire pit, don't do it on windy days, make sure it's extinguished, those, because they're not thinking of that, I can guarantee you that.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Mendoza, any final, anything? All right, I see Ms. Hernandez is here, and I'm thinking she may have something to offer, so I'll give her a moment at the microphone, or maybe.
Oh, you got the fee schedule.
Oh, she brought us the fee schedule, thank you.
Yes, we have the fee schedule. The, the short-term rental home share registration fee, that, that used to be under our department, so it's still on our fee schedule. Used to be $50, it's now 75. When we went through and did our full fee research to find out how much we were charging, I'm 99.9% certain we didn't look at that particular fee. So I don't know that $75 is enough to cover everything that Greg has, so it might be part of another, you know, sort of deeper dive we do into our fees to potentially bring that up to be able to cover all of the costs.
And is that also for renewal, the same fee?
I only have one fee on the fee schedule, so yes, $75.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I was guessing somewhere 50, 100 bucks, so.
Yeah, I would have said 50, thank you Amanda, it's good to have the backup. The good news is that this host compliance that we're going with is not one of those super expensive softwares. When we added the new modules, it's not, you know, the $50,000 a year thing.
Must not be, because it doesn't come before us.
No. So it's, it's actually a pretty good value for us to use. And even on the re-inspections though, we still do the safety inspections. It's not just a, a paper whip where, okay, you're good. We still do the same as if it's-
For the renewal?
For the renewals, yeah.
And so is that $75 covering the cost of that inspection?
I would have to look, as Amanda said, we may have to do an adjustment, but I-
Need to look at that, because-
I think it's close.
Because if there's fire inspectors going out, there's a cost to us too.
No, it's, it's, they've, they've trained. The first house we went out to, Fire went out with my inspectors, I have two that do just this, well, with other things, but they're the only two that will do these.
But still, that's your people having to go out there.
So they went out with the Fire Marshal's office on what they wanted us to look at. And it was very easy stuff, you know?
But still, my point is, we're sending people out, and that costs us.
Yes.
And about how many do we have right now?
I believe it's around 65, but again, don't hold me to that.
Well, with the rule change, there may be a whole heck of a lot more soon. So, but it is what it is. Okay. If there are no more questions, we will close this out, thank you, and yours again. I'm going to go to question and answer next, but I need to close this out first. And we have question and answer next, do we have anyone signed up? Okay, so there's no one signed. If you'll go to the microphone and state your name for us, please. And you have three minutes to ask your questions. If we know the answer now, we will answer it. If not, if you will give us an email address, we'll get back with you.
Right on, my name is Ryan Zimmerman, I'm a homeowner here in San Marcos. To the max occupancy topic and along with the party topic, I know that San Marcos has a history of problems with long-term rentals in this, right? You know, I've been around here for 15 years. Why, why is it so much different talking about the short-term rental market versus the long-term rental market? Isn't the enforcement similar? What do we do currently to enforce max occupancy at a duplex on Sagewood versus a home in a neighborhood versus a short-term rental? And why is this seemingly such a one-off from that?
Do you have any more questions?
I do, for you.
If you'll, if you'll go ahead and ask them all, please, sir.
You had mentioned the one per block rule. Didn't that also create a situation where you could potentially have two houses right next to each other that could both be short-term rentals depending on where the block is defined?
They, they have to be 600 feet apart.
Or 600 feet apart.
Which ever is the-
So if I own a, a multi-unit property like a duplex, I cannot short-term rent both halves?
Mr. Carr, you'll need to come to the microphone, but really, we, we-
That's why I only have two questions.
Okay, then.
So right now, you can have one. So that's a good question for you guys. Is one a duplex? You could have both of them, because that would be two. We're considerate, two.
I'm sorry, we're, we're limiting it to?
Right, so you could have one, short-term rental. So if you live on the property, you might have a granny flat out back.
Right.
You could do that. If you had a duplex, you lived in one, you could do the, the other one. But if you had two of them, you could long-term rent both of them, but you could only short-term rent one of them.
Because of the block length?
Just because it's the number.
Well, I'm talking about the change, after you don't have to be.
Well, and that, I guess that's a good question to ask you, if it's one property, but it's, because it's not multifamily, because that's five or more. So if it's a duplex or a fourplex, you know, I guess the good answer to that is, those are probably not going to be in the residentially zoned areas so that block stuff doesn't count towards them.
Well, that's would be a residential, are you thinking, when you say residential, do you really mean single family?
Single family, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, because that's what it was before, was the, the single family. But one thing that's coming back in, in my brain that's sort of related but not, is the, the zoning. Because I think there's probably a whole lot of people in Blanco Vista that would be really surprised to find out that they're not in single-family zoning.
Yes, and then for a question that you had previously, and that's the issue. So there, it's not residential or single family, it's mixed use.
Right.
So most of the duplexes were probably in the mixed use, which don't-
No, duplexes are, they're duplex zoning.
Well, the current ordinance is only single-family, you know, the one, two, like, there's three or four.
Right.
So if it's-
We're, we're making a huge change here, and we're going to have to figure this, figure this out. I, I would look at it as front doors. So a duplex would be two.
Two front doors.
A fourplex would be four, regardless of the fact that it's in the same building, it's four. So that's the way I would look at it. So how many can somebody have?
So in a single-family district, one.
Okay.
If it's a mixed-use, commercial, then there's no restriction on, well, they can still have, well, like, boils down, they can, we only allow them to have one.
Regardless of what the zoning is?
Yeah, so do you want us to look at? And I, just caution us on that, because, I mean, we can look at, figure out a solution, but let's take Blanco Vista, if they had fourplexes and duplexes up there, they, you know, it's mixed use. So if we say you can do it in mixed use, it's really residential intent. And for Blanco Vista, their HOA doesn't allow it anyway. So what I was getting back to your question you had earlier is, part of the application process, because we can't keep tabs on every HOA and how they change things, we put that on the applicant as check, and it's a checkbox they'll have to check off on. You need to check with your local HOA if it's allowed.
And you make a good point, and I think probably we ought to have some reference to HOAs in the ordinance. And just say that HOAs rule, or whatever. That these only apply where HOAs don't govern, or something like that. But I think we need to make reference, because if I read this, and I'm not real familiar with HOA stuff, I wouldn't think to check. And even though it's on the application, I, I think we probably ought to say something. Mr. Gary, what do you, what do you think?
It's, if, if it makes things more clear, I mean, I don't see a problem with that. But just a clarification, we're in the question and answer session, so we're kind of-
Right.
-re-entering the, the workshop session, so. But I think we can look at these issues, and staff can come up with some proposals for, for the council to discuss.
And, and back to this gentleman's first question about people making noise, whether it's my house, or whether it's multifamily, or whether it's a rental, or whether it's a short-term rental.
And, and the reason I ask that is as a-
Come to the microphone. No, it's a reasonable question.
Yeah, and, and part of the reason is, and, and we both know this, is as a, you know, I've done both in the property I'm in now, and currently I have an exterior camera, and I'm next door, and even when I'm not there, I know what's going on. And when people come in for three or four days, I know how many people there are, right? I can see what's going on, I get to go in afterward every time. When I'm long-term renting it, I don't know any of those things. I don't have a camera, nor do I have the right to. They're in there for extended periods of time, I don't know what's going on, and then I find out a year or so later. But during that time, we all know, folks are, you know, partying in long-term rentals, right? San Marcos has got lots of that going on. I just, again, why is the enforcement so much, why is the discussion so much different?
Mayor, can I address that, just?
Yeah, and just a reminder, you know, that under the rule normally it's three minutes inclusive of answers. If Scotty wants to continue further, you, you may, but it's, it's answering the general questions as well.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Time, sending an email to him, and it's a good question. You're right, we've got a history of issues similar to this with long-term rental properties, and this dates back many years during my tenure even at the police department. And, and so we, we actually did craft ordinances related at, at that. Our host responsibility ordinance namely, and that's to address some of these raucous parties where you've got garbage, parking issues, and noise. And if those types of issues persist at a, at a rental property, or really any, any property, we can engage with the property owner and, and actually mandate that they help engage with us in the problem solving for that. You probably have anything to deal with that, it's not real common in homes. It's, it, for a while, we were very active in dealing with apartment managers with that ordinance. So it's a different way of dealing with similar problems in long-term rentals.
And they can, and that one, you can, they can actually get their electricity cut. And a kind of a short response to you too is, so a long-term renter, they're responsible, they're there, they can get in trouble with the short-term, and that's kind of where some of the residents compare it to a hotel. They may be just there for a day or two, so there's no commitment from them to, what the heck, let's have fun, and I'm out of here tomorrow. So that, I, maybe answers your question, hopefully.
And it's, it's just easier for us to enforce as an owner, I don't want people having a party in my place. My place is nice, you know?
All right. If you'll go to the microphone, state your name, and you've got three minutes to ask your questions, and then we will answer them now if we can, if not, we'll get back with you.
Tom Ebersdike, and my question is, in this ordinance, why are we allowed to only have one short-term rental? We can't have two? When other businesses in this city, like a restaurant, can open up two restaurants, and not a third restaurant, somebody can open up a bar, one or two, a hotel can open up another hotel. I just want to know why we are restricted to only having one short-term rental?
There is a lot, do you have any other questions?
No, that's, that's my basic one.
There, there was a lot of conversation. And on the council, we had people who liked short-term rentals and thought we should allow them anywhere and everywhere, and others of us, and I'm going, do we really want every homeowner in town to be able to open up a small hotel in their home? And so where we met in the middle was to require ownership, and we can't do that anymore. There are concerns about investors coming in, and the whole block, which this kind of fixes that, and the whole block is now short-term rentals and party town. So we're kind of easing into this, and we might end up with the two at some point, but we're still, is it fair to say, Ms. Reyes, we're still figuring all this out? Because we are a desirable city, people want to come here, and not everybody wants to stay in a hotel.
Yes, ma'am, and of course, with any, you know, council's giving direction today about what they want to see in the ordinance, the ordinance will still be up for council's consideration at a future meeting once Greg is, is able to go back and do that. So there'll be additional time to give, give feedback and comments. But with anything, we're always going to be looking at if there are unintended consequences or things that aren't working for us, and there are things that aren't working for the short-term rental owners or the neighbors, and then we would bring any of that feedback back to council as, as necessary.
True, but we, you know, we're, we're a business, just like any others, you know? There are people that just don't like people who drink, they shouldn't even sell alcohol, you know? But we have a liquor store here, liquor store there, and, and there's no problems there. And you have all these new rules and regulations, and that should just nip everything in the bud, you know? I was, am in favor of everybody getting registered, because there are my competition out there that's cutting the prices on.
Sir, your, your time to ask questions is over, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But where, what we're looking at is, because of things that have happened, is we're looking to make sure that the neighbors are not adversely affected. And that, that's the number one. If we kind of get to where we're ready to dip our toe in the water and say two each, you know, we, we may get there, but we're, we're kind of easing into this. Okay, that ends, anyone else question and answer? And then, in that point, I think I would accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Ms. Cordova, would you call for a roll? I mean, call for the vote.
Mr. Scott? Ms. Carza? Mayor Hewson?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather? Four, four, and three absent.
Okay, so we will conclude at 4:08. Thanks to you, Mr. Carr, again.